Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jean Middleton-Harrison, and welcome to our board meeting, April 18th, 2018. I call the board meeting to order, and Mr. Gary Hanna will introduce the student who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Murray. Today I had the pleasure of introducing Ms. Casey Cyan Grandison, the fifth grader scholar at Casey Elementary. She is the daughter of Tatum and Donnell Grandison. Casey attended, I mean, Casey has attended Casey since first grade, has made all A's every single year, and always scored the highest levels on the state test. Her favorite subject is science because she wants to become a chemical engineer. Casey says she is successful because she studies hard and believes in herself. This is Casey Grandison.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for
Thank you very much. We appreciate your leading us in the pledge. Next, I'd like to introduce Dr. Hickman Johnson, the Reverend Dr. Hickman Johnson, Senior Pastor of Ferris Street Baptist Church, who will bring our inspiration. Reverend Dr. Johnson was born in Memphis, Tennessee, and currently resides in Jackson. He is a graduate of Tennessee State University, Morehouse School of Religion, Interdenominational Theological Center, Mississippi College, and his Master's in Divinity from Emory University. During his tenure as a minister, he has been recognized for various accomplishments, including being the author of Farewell My Friends, a book of eulogies and tributes, published by Trafford Press in 2010. His wife of 50 years is Mrs. Gladys M. Johnson. They have five daughters and eight grandchildren. They are richly blessed. Please welcome Reverend Dr. Hickman Johnson.
Thank you. And a little child shall leave them, prophecy or reality? A few years ago, we would have answered prophecy, but today, reality. Reality because the future is now. Hashtag Black Lives Matter, hashtag Never Again, are movements led by children, children who were traumatized by violence. They might have remained children, except we forced them to age, to lose their innocence, forced to look at the gruesome sights of classmates and friends, victims of gun violence. How many times have we said, children are our future? But if we kill our children, then we kill our future. Never again hashtag hashtag Black Lives Matter. It is incumbent upon all of us, board members, school administrators, teachers, parents, community leaders, and politicians, to teach our children well. Do you remember the words of Crosby, Steels, and Nash? You who are on the road must have a code that you can live by, and so become yourselves. Because the past is just a goodbye, teach your children well. Their fathers held it slowly go by and feed them on your dreams, the ones they picked, the ones you'll know by. Don't you ever ask them why? If they told you, you would cry. So just look at them and sigh, and know they love you, and you of tender years can't know the tears that your elders grew by. And so please help them with your youth. They seek the truth before they can die. Teach your children well.
Thank you, Reverend Johnson, very much.
Reverend Johnson.
Let the record show that all six members of the board are seated, and we have established a quorum. Could I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we have approved, adopted, approved the adoption of the agenda as presented. We have before us the April 3rd minutes of the regular board meeting distributed by Ms. Williams earlier. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Some more.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, we have approved the minutes from April 3rd. Attorney Turner, are there any requests for a public comment?
Yes.
Thank you.
First, you have Jacqueline McLendon-Griffin, who'd like to address you on the superintendent search.
We can actually, is Ms. McLendon here? We were actually going to invite Ms. McLendon to speak during, I'm sorry, I jumped right in.
No, no, you're good.
During the superintendent search section of the agenda, so, because she'll have more than three minutes to address the question.
Right. She's bringing some information to us. Thank you.
The second person who signed up is Georgette Yakman, who also would like to address you regarding the superintendent search.
Georgette Yakman, thank you. Please come forward.
Hello, I'm not from your city. I was invited in by United Way, and I wanted to thank you for allowing United Way to do the STEAM entrepreneurial project with the students. And I stayed an extra two days. I had dealt with Chicago, I've dealt with Detroit.
There were some things here that I saw that were very similar, but also very distressing to me. So I kept my head of staff here for two days. I flew her out this morning. We're very interested in your superintendent search, so much so that we want to be involved to make sure that you got the right person, so much so that I'm even considering throwing my name in the hat. Just thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Item six, Dr. Murray will have a report from the CAP, an update on the CAP.
Okay. Dr. Murray.
Thank you, Dr. Murray.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Murray, and Board of Trustees. You have a report that was enclosed in your board material, but I do want to bring forth just a couple more general updates. One, on last Tuesday, we were able to review the approved corrective action plan with all principles. Standard leaders did come, attend the meeting, and we went by standard and reviewed the standards and emphasized the important components of each standard and what was important for us to get right and clear as it relates to those respective standards. We are continuing to operate with a sense of urgency, but at the same time, it's important that we get things right. And I think you all were able to see, and one of my responses to the questions is that when we're doing some internal monitoring and checking, some standards cross with another standard, and so it's important that we bring one standard in compliance so that we can have others in compliance as well. And we are working well with MDE. They are providing the technical assistance that's needed. Mr. Stamps, who is the district contact from the Office of Accreditation, he and I had a phone call on Friday mornings typically at nine, where we reviewed updates on technical assistance, standards, if there's any support that's needed, and we're moving forward in a collaborative effort. So all is going well, and we are continuing to work with a sense of urgency to make sure that we have, bring all standards in compliance.
Great. I know that we are in the midst of our district-wide state testing, and that was a concern of MDE in the previous CAP report, not the recently approved one, same report. Can you speak to that issue, that we're confident that we're finding, following all protocol, and our teachers and staff are well-trained?
Yes, ma'am. So we did have an additional follow-up session with principals. Dr. Knox, who, standard 16 is student assessment, and we reviewed the protocols that are required for student assessment, and to make sure that principals, we reviewed, had the actual monitoring instrument, to make sure that principals have all components of that monitoring instrument in place. Additionally, Dr. Knox's office did, they did do some onsite monitoring, because it's important that we trust and verify that all things are in place as well.
Great. Thank you so much for that information.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments, board? Thank you, Dr. Murray.
Dr. Murray, we'd like to thank Dr. Murray and the team for your ongoing leadership with corrective action plan, actually doing double duty.
Triple duty.
Appreciate that work.
Thank you.
We have just a couple more announcements. Greetings, our board members, JPS administrators, staff, parents, and community partners. We'd like to just take a moment of silence. At this time, we'd like to pause for a moment of silence over the passing of our former First Lady, Ms. Barbara Bush. On behalf of the Jackson Public Schools Barbara Bush Teen Trendsetter Program, we offer our sincere condolences in the passing of Ms. Bush. Her mission to provide tangible support to enhance children's literacy will have a lasting impact for generations to come. Our prayers are with the family and the foundation. JPS honors outstanding parent. Each year, the district across the state selects a parent who has displayed outstanding qualities to enhance scholar experiences while cultivating partnerships within their school community. These individuals then move on to be considered for the Mississippi Parent of the Year Award. At this time, we'd like to ask our Director of Partners in Education, Ms. Thea Faulkner, to come forward to introduce our 2017-18 JPS Parent of the Year.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Murray. It is my indeed honor to recognize Mr. Willis Barker as our 2017-2018 Jackson Public Schools' Partners of the Year. Mr. Barker, would you come forward, please? We acknowledge Mr. Barker and a surprise celebration at Casey Elementary School, and it was very difficult to do so because he is everywhere. So it's very difficult to sneak around Casey to get this done. Mr. Barker is the parent of two twin, excuse me, of twin boys at Casey Elementary School, his twin boys. This retired military man stands out among parents at Casey as a motivator and a generous giver. Not only does he deliver snacks to his own son's classroom, but he brings enough for other classes. He takes on any project at the school, from assembling furniture to trimming trees and just knocking out the things-to-do wish list of teachers and administrators. As the Chair of Watch Dogs, Dads of Great Students, Mr. Barker has led several successful events to promote the involvement of fathers and fathers at Casey Elementary School, making it one of the most active groups in the district. Mr. Barker is also active in his church and civic groups. He is a member of the Tugaloo Toastmasters and serves as President of both the men's ministry and outreach ministry at Aldersgate United Methodist Church. He is married to Erica Manery Barker. Mr. Barker is very unassuming, behind-the-scenes kind of person, and I thought this was just amazing. When we were at Casey to celebrate this announcement, a reporter asked Mr. Barker for examples of what he had done to be named the Parent of the Year, and Mr. Barker replied, "I don't keep a tally of what I do. I just want all the kids and teachers to be okay, then I know my twin boys are okay as well." Please join me for another round of applause for Mr. Barker. So Mr. Barker has already gotten his goodie bag, and so just.
It was this weekend, or is it last weekend?
Excellent. So we convened a group of community partners to review applications and nominations from various schools, and the community partners selected Mr. Barker, and they did an outstanding job in selecting someone that was well-deserving. In addition, our community partners provided very generous gifts to our Parent of the Year, which he said that he's already started using. KPMG, the school's adopter, provided a plaque and a one-year membership to the Mississippi Civil Rights and Mississippi History Museums. The Natural Science Museum provided a one-year membership. The Mississippi Museum of Art provided a one-year membership and a hardback book on the history of art in Mississippi, which of course, art is very important at Casey. He received a $50 gift certificate to Sally Mooki's Restaurant courtesy of Jeff Good, a $25 gift card to Barnes &amp; Noble courtesy of Southern Farm Bureau, four one-day passes to the Children's Museum. How about that, guys? Four one-day passes and an additional gift package to the Mississippi Sports Hall of Fame, and a gift basket from Partners in Education. Mr. Barker, we have one more surprise for you. So I want you to know, you're the 2018 Parent of the Year, but you'll be a part of us for life, and I'll prove that. Our 2016 Parent of the Year, Mr. Steve Collins, has a gift for you.
Hold on one second. We want to hear what you have to say.
In keeping with this new position that you're embarking on, we would like for you to be dressed nicely. There you go places.
We're dressed nicely.
Good deal. So what I'd like to do, I'd like to present you with a couple of shirts, so when you're doing things, and when you're going to orientations and different things, you're representing JPS, which we love. We would love for you to be represented well and nice, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Good, thank you.
So the shirts are engraved with JPS's logo with his name and indicates 2018 Parent of the Year. Mr. Barker, would you like to say anything?
Sorry.
Would you like to say anything?
Uh.
Ah, yes, Mrs. Barker.
Well, I just want to, again, thank Jackson Public Schools and Ms. Yoder for this nomination. This is, as my wife and I talk about it all the time, this is not something that we do for any type of recognition. It's all about the children, and all about making sure that the children has everything they need, all the needs are being met. With my wife and I, we also just do that with anyone that's in our circle. And so you can ask anyone that we've ever touched, have we've ever reached out to make sure that they had all their needs met, and they will tell you yes, because I think that's what it's really all about. It's all about doing your part, and as long as you do your part, you can walk away with making sure that you've done your part. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Wonderful. That's very uplifting.
That is superintendent's report.
Wonderful report. Thank you, Dr. Murray. Thank you to the Barker family. Item seven, information-only items, and this is regarding item A, the superintendent search update. And I'd first like to thank everyone across our community who has participated with us and supported our effort to hear and listen and learn from our community partners, our constituents, our parents, families, students, everyone touched by JPS. And tonight in particular, we will have three presentations. The first one will be from Ms. Jackie McLendon, who will share with us some of the findings generated during the previous board search, so that this current board will be fully informed and have some historical perspective. So we appreciate Ms. McLendon doing that as well to help us learn more. After her presentation, we will hear from the Fahrenheit Group, who led the most recent listening community sessions, stakeholder sessions, on yesterday and Monday. And following that, we will hear from Dr. Jacobson and his team, from McPherson and Jacobson, the consultant firm, the national consultant firm that is helping us conduct this superintendent search. So all under item A.
Good evening, Dr. Harrison.
Good evening.
Dr. Murray, board. It is my pleasure to be able to stand here before you to present the findings of the superintendent search that was conducted last spring in 2017. Being passed around to you now are some of the findings from the community chats that were hosted throughout the city of Jackson, based off of some of the questions that were geared towards what we were looking for within the city. So in the spring of 2017, the school board developed a task force here in Jackson with the hopes to create a vision for the school district, in addition to begin thinking about what type of leadership we would want to see here in JPS. So the task force comprised of 50-plus citizens that represented teacher associations, faith-based groups, students, parents, guardians, nonprofit organization businesses, arts councils, and so forth. We were tasked to go out into our circles of influence and have these community chats. So over a period of three months, we had these chats where all across the city of Jackson, where we've reached at least, if not more, a thousand of our community citizens. In these chats, we asked seven questions. Now, we understood that these seven questions didn't speak specifically to the superintendent search. However, these questions were asked intentionally so that we can construct a vision of our community and our schools for the upcoming superintendent, in minds that if they are able to meet these needs, hopefully that would play in the effectiveness of their role. So the seven questions that were asked was, what was the purpose of education? In your perspective, what is the biggest educational need in Jackson? What should we expect from education in Jackson? What do you think our educators need to be successful? What do you think our students need to be successful? What do you think our parents, guardian, and caregivers need to be successful? And then what is an innovation you would like to see in education here in Jackson? Now, again, keeping in mind that they didn't address the superintendent need, however, within those conversations, there were some skill sets and qualities brought up that they felt a superintendent must possess. One of the findings that we noted across all of the community chats was one of the biggest concerns that when searching for a superintendent, that we not just look and listen to the ideas that they have in moving forward, but however, pay attention to the measurable plans of actions that they're able to bring, show that they understand the culture and the importance of working within the community, and then be able to show their accomplishments with what they want to see within the community and the educators, and be able to meet those needs as they see fit within the district. So during the summer of 2017, the members of the task force came together to review all the responses and the conversations, and decided to pull them out into different themes. And now with the themes underneath our seven questions, we developed a mini mission statement, so to speak, and highlighted at least the top five items that were listed. And those top five were pretty much selected based upon the redundancy of the needs mentioned. So then if we bring that forward into the core questions in which you, the current board, are asking the community to keep in mind or to think about, we feel like some of those same seven questions fit underneath those four. So from my understanding, not only passing out to you, but you also received some other documents, some Excel spreadsheets and things of that nature. So for your first two questions that ask what is, what is good that's going on in the community and our schools, we feel that you can find a lot of those answers in at least that Excel spreadsheet that was emailed to you. With question three that you were asking, what are the issues that someone coming into the district should be aware of? This is where we felt like some of our seven questions fit. One of those questions being, what was the biggest need in education here in Jackson? We felt that adequate funding to ensure that we have effective leadership, where parents, teachers, and community are involved, engaged, and supported to reach student outcomes. More specifically, funding, parent involvement and engagement, effective leadership, teacher support and training, and community support, involvement, and engagement. What do educators need to be successful? Well, educators need support, proper training, and incentives from their leaders and the community and parents, to be able to have disciplined settings and a positive environment that allow for better classroom management and actions that will lead to student outcomes. Again, more specifically, educators need support, training, incentives, discipline, environment, and some action. What do the students need to be successful? Students need systemic inclusiveness and responsible leadership that provides adequate and abundant services, resources, and safety that positively promote and support an effective learning environment. Again, more specifically, power. They need someone who can make those decisions. They need good, solid instruction and learning. They need safety. They need inclusiveness and responsiveness, and they also need services and resources that are adequate to allow effectiveness. What do the parents, guardians, and caregivers need? Well, they need JPS's attitude towards them to be more inclusive and responsive, so that they are engaged, educated, mobilized, and prepared to support their children in their schools. Again, more specifically, parent engagement and mobilization, parent prep, and a school district with a positive attitude towards them. Now with your fourth question, what are the skills and qualities a superintendent should have? This is where we pushed in our question. This is where we pushed in our question, what do we expect from education in Jackson? The findings were that we want a strategic vision and a plan with strategic goals that are reaching student outcomes, that have highly qualified teachers with community involvement and proper governance, communicated throughout Jackson and beyond, focused on student outcomes. More specific, teaching, strategic vision and planning, strategic goals, community involvement, student outcomes, communications, and governance. As it relates to the superintendent specifically, professionalism, a proven change agent, one who understands that being a leader is an inclusive process, someone who is confident in their skills and supported by previous history, someone that has significant experience in leading a school district similar to JPS, and a proven track record of turning around a school district or some part of it. Excellent interpersonal skills, including an ability to connect with people within each sector of the district, which includes administrators, teachers, parents, students, et cetera. Commitment to engaging the students in creative ways, understands the issues unique to Mississippians or has limited learning curve. And then, most importantly, understanding the importance of developing its teachers within the district. And those were just some of the findings that we came up with based off of our community chats.
Thank you very much, Ms. McLendon. This is very, very helpful and is aligned very much with what we've been hearing. And I know that Fahrenheit and McPherson and Jacobson also appreciate hearing these insights that precede this board, and we appreciate the work that has been done and you're sharing with us.
Thank you.
Do we have other comments from the board, questions?
I would just ask, I know that that effort was very comprehensive. And if you could just maybe share the groups that engaged, some of the numbers. Because again, I felt like that effort was inclusive and it was robust. So again, just so folks, we don't want to overlook it, and that's why we wanted to have you here tonight.
Thank you. Well, I tell you, a lot of the groups, like I said, we wanted to make sure that the biggest voice that we heard was from the teachers. So I am an educator here within the district, and I also serve as president representing Jackson Association of Educators. So it was a really big push of hours to make sure that we were in the schools. We had our representatives to, if not sit with some of their members in their buildings, but to just sit with some of their group team clusters to see what the biggest needs were. Because at the time, we were divided into the seven wards. And we also understood that the needs in North Jackson may not necessarily be the needs in South, and vice versa, out in West. So we wanted to be very intentional with the questions that were asked. We did deviate some from the seven original questions, because again, we wanted, you know, being big stakeholders here within the district, we wanted to make sure, if nothing else, as educators, our voices were heard and that it was understood that these were the things that we felt were needed and necessary moving forward with the superintendent, and then also ensuring the academic success of our students, as well as our personal growth as well. So yes, a lot of this was comprehensive and kind of a melting pot of a little bit of everybody. But the strongest voice in there was kind of like a 75-25 balance between educators and the community voice.
Thank you. I must say that I was also very impressed with the voice of the students that your research uplifted. It was very informative to get students understanding and sharing how they experience school.
Yes, I would say with the student input, I want to say that was one of the biggest driving forces of creating the student voice on the board, even if it was just for the listing and the participation sake, not necessarily the voting, but just so that their voices and their needs can be brought forward as well.
Right, it was excellent, thank you. If there are no further comments, we once again want to thank you so much for sharing this information.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we will hear from Jason Thompson, who is chief partner with the Fahrenheit Creative Group.
Good evening, Dr. Hairston, board members, Dr. Murray. Good evening to all of you all. First of all, I want to start by thanking you all for allowing us to participate in this process. We have just been very, very, you know, just proud to be able to support this work and very enthused by what we've heard from people in the community. And so I definitely don't want to foreshadow too much what you'll hear from McPherson and Jacobson. But we started with their four guiding questions as a part. So our role in the work was specifically to engage community members and community-based organizations. And in order for the data to, you know, kind of support and be in line, we wanted to make sure we started with those four grounding questions. But we also wanted to dig a little bit deeper, be a little bit more probative, to ensure that we were getting a little bit more granular in terms of finding very specific detailed information that community stakeholders wanted to see. And a lot of what we learned, not only is going to be very valuable to inform the superintendent's search, but we do believe it'll be valuable to inform more of the board's work as it moves forward. So the process that we designed, we designed with the guidance from the board. And they were trying to do three things. They told us, they wanted the process to be inclusive and transparent, and also to be empowering for folks to make sure they had an opportunity to see their voice and their input be put into action. And so with the two community stakeholder meetings that we did for leaders of civic social and civic and social institutions, we did a very, a process where we allowed the four questions to be posed and allow for their feedback. But in the community meetings, we did something a little bit different, where we went through a process of allowing folks to engage with their fellow stakeholders around tables to really come to a sense of consensus around questions that you'll hear, and looking very deeply about what opportunities they were excited about and what things were going on in the community that could contribute to successful schools and a school district to support attracting a quality candidate. But also getting deeper into how do the quality, skills, and characteristics that they want to see in a superintendent, how do they look in action? So what's the practical application of those things? So we wanted to help people think about that. So throughout the two days that we spent with folks, we talked to over 150 people. It was a very demographically diverse group in terms of their roles in the community, in terms of their engagement and relationship with the schools and the school district, but also in terms of how they thought, you know, a public school in practice should look. So that was very good, that we were able to hear lots of different feedback there. And we also hosted meetings in all four school areas. So we were at Cardoza and Murrah on Monday evening, and then on Tuesday, we were at Provine and Callaway. So I'm sure what you'll hear here and what you'll hear next is that there was a lot of overlap, which is very positive. So there was a lot of alignment with the work that the previous group did for the prior board. And so I'll share a little bit of that, particularly the top-level findings that we have that are in the draft report that you have. So the first thing that we saw and heard was from both community-based organizations and from parents, teachers, and students, is that there is a well of support from organizations and from individuals who are ready to participate in improving outcomes for students. But they would like to see a more formalized process to be engaged and sustain that work. Folks felt that there's a huge pool of diversity in the city of Jackson, talent that can be tapped and help move the school district forward. And they felt really good about where communication is going. So they are appreciative of the school district's movement forward and being more transparent and open, and particularly complimentary of the board. And the recognition that funding is an issue was there. And so that allowed to pivot into what folks wanted to see in the superintendent, and I'll just highlight a few things. But one was looking at other creative ways to fund programs and activities within the school district. Some things that are very aligned with what we just heard. Folks definitely want to see a candidate with experience in an urban district similar to Jackson. So thinking about size, thinking about geographic location, but also thinking about some of those other socioeconomic and health indicators that exist that are unique to Jackson. The word "change agent" was definitely lifted up a lot, but also someone who has the courage and fortitude to deal with the political environment, and also deal with being firm about those difficult decisions that superintendents and the board has to make. The emphasis on data was very, very evident and very, very thorough because of the need to make sure that performance and the metrics around assessments are there. And strategy was a really big part of it. The sentiments around being aware of the cultural issues here, particularly around socioeconomics, family composition, homelessness, was very critical. And then the last two things were the ability to build a team to make sure that all of those aspects are being met. So the needs of parents, the needs of students, the data piece, the assessment piece, and curriculum piece were all there, so evidence having done that. And so the most interesting, one of the most interesting findings was one that came out very clear, was the community desires to have somebody that wants to be here, that wants to not only live in Jackson, but be a part of the community through and through. And that was really important, because they want to see somebody who is committed to Jackson for the long haul. And so those are just, again, some top-level findings that we have. Again, the draft report has all of the information. And by the end of the week, we will send the full report that has all of the information that was included on cards that folks had also opportunity to submit.
Thank you so much, Mr. Thompson. I did want to share with our community our appreciation for the work that Fahrenheit is doing around the superintendent's search. Parallel collaborative work with McPherson and Jacobson, who are our powerhouse nationally, knowing how to reach out to prospective, high-quality superintendent candidates across the country. That's a real strength that they provide to this process. That is their strength in this particular regard. And so to have this voice representing time spent on the ground with our parents and families and community stakeholders is very important for us to get a complete picture. So we appreciate that work, knowing that you're also doing lots of other work. So thank you so much. Do we have questions or comments from the board regarding Mr. Thompson's report? Hearing none, thank you so much. And next, we'll hear from Dr. Tom Jacobson with the McPherson and Jacobson Search Firm. And he's going to bring to us an update on the work they have been doing locally as well within the school district, and how that is aligned. If you've had any opportunity to think through what you've heard and what that means for us moving forward on a national search level. Thank you so much, Dr. Jacobson.
Good evening, board members, staff members, and community members. It is just outstanding to see the work that you're putting into this process. And we appreciate your community effort and the board's effort to gather information. Our portion tonight is some logistical things about the search itself, plus a quick update of our visit here. I put agenda out, I think Ms. Williams handed it out to you. We want to talk about the stakeholder exit report. You're going to get a verbal report of some of the reoccurring themes we heard in the last three days. But you're going to get a printed report of everything we heard from every constituent, along with an executive summary. We encourage you to post that on your website so that your community members can see what was said as we do that. Also, we're going to talk about interview questions. I'm going to pass out some samples and ask you to look those over and give them to Ms. Williams. Hopefully by the end of evening, before you leave, or certainly by tomorrow, so we can work with those. We're going to just talk a little bit about the interview schedule. I'll give you a summary of what we recommend for you, but that's something that'll be coming back later. Then at the last meeting, I was asked to get some information about superintendent compensation. So I have a handout of every school district in the state of Mississippi, and I took the five highest-paid and just put those in there, so you would have that to look at. So with that, as of this morning, we had 38 individuals that started the application process. We're very happy with that, very impressed with that. As we look at the 27 years we've done this, this doesn't close until May 14th. Seventy-five to eighty percent of our applications come in the last two days. So we're very happy at this portion to have that number and that interest as we do that. We had a team of five members, McPherson and Jacobson, come in Sunday night, and they spent Monday, Tuesday, and finished up at four o'clock today, meeting with stakeholder groups, asking those same four questions that were just mentioned, the good things about the community, the good things about the school district, the issues here, and the characteristics you'd like to see in the new superintendent. And I'm going to ask Dr. Fine, who has led this team of five over this week, to come and give you summaries of some of the reoccurring themes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jacobson. Thank you, board. It's been our honor to be part of your community for the last three days. I have never been to Mississippi, but I read a lot about Mississippi. And I will tell you, the one thing that you need to put on your brand, southern hospitality starts here. Because we have been nothing but graciously accepted in your community, and I thank you so much. From Roslyn, who has been my right hand with logistics, I thank her for everything. The Fahrenheit group have been wonderful. Ed, you have been really wonderful in helping us organize everything. And your staff has just been very gracious, so thank you very much for that. We are delighted to share with you our results, and this is just the themes. What my team, and I have three of them sitting here this evening, I'd like to introduce, two are not, or one is not here. On the far part of the second row, Dr. Margie Wallace. Would you stand, please? Margie hails from Erie, Pennsylvania, and Tampa, Florida. Guess where she spent her winter? We have Mr. Ron Walker. Ron actually is a resident of Mississippi. Hattiesburg? Hattiesburg. And we have Ms. Janet Dixon, who is a resident of Louisiana, not far from here. So they were very, very helpful in logistics and getting around. And one of the other individuals I wish to name, who has been very helpful, was Ms. Lakeisha Marshall-Thomas. She was extremely helpful in this process, so thank you for that. As you heard this evening, and you'll hear some of the same themes that Jason just shared with you, tell us the good things about your community. You have a great community. Family-friendly, the revitalization of downtown, these were reoccurring themes. Quality of life, and that included weather, central location to a number of major cities such as Memphis, New Orleans, Houston, the Gold Coast, Alabama, low cost of living, affordable housing, university community, lots of museums, emphasis on arts, environmental center, parks, theaters. There's a lot of community support for all schools, very positive relationships with businesses and universities, strong faith-based community who partner with the district to impact children, particularly in a special STEM program we heard about over and over again. Great food, home to Mississippi's only teaching hospital. There was an urban feel with a small-town friendly atmosphere. And there are many mentor programs through churches and the universities which benefit students, particularly at the high school level, with some... students, particularly at the high school level, with some research opportunities. We, in fact, even heard about students who just received a patent for one of their designs at one of your high schools. So, over and over again, we met with 22 groups representing 59 divisions of your organization, three external groups from your community, and we had in attendance between 625 and 650 people. So, these are the themes that have emerged from that. The good things about your schools, dedicated and passionate staff, I can't tell you how many times that was said, students who really love to learn, the business partnerships were a real positive for the schools, outstanding academic programs, particularly, these are the ones that were mentioned over and over again, Davis Magnet School, number-one school in the state of Mississippi, the IB program, APEC, dual enrollment, CDC, athletics, performing arts, arts, music programs, Montessori program, SOAR, and bass player program. Students do graduate, sorry, students do graduate-level research at the University of MSC. You have a great junior ROTC program. And there, you have a number of teams that participate at a national and international level in several competitions. And we were extremely impressed with your acceptance rate at Ivy League universities and very competitive universities and military academies. Again, this came from community, your staff members, and all the groups that we interviewed. Issues, what are those issues that the new superintendent should be aware of? Number-one issue, shortage of certified teachers, as well as recruitment and retention of teachers. Salary inequities, concerns about infrastructure with buildings and grounds, coordination of curriculum, accountability, some concern over prioritization of funding and decentralized hiring, some morale issues, and that, you know, covers a wide array. Concern for training and maintenance of equipment and public relations, and a way to brand all the great things happening in your school district. There was a concern that wonderful things are happening, but it's not branded or marketed to the community. So, those were issues that the new superintendent should be aware of. The last question with skills, qualities, or characteristics should the new superintendent possess to be successful here? The person should be a results-oriented leader, effective communicator, and a genuine listener, should possess honesty, integrity, be visible in both the community and in schools, have the ability to use data analytics, have a deep and thorough knowledge of teaching and learning, be steadfast and courageous in decision-making, be financially and politically savvy, be competent, be a strong instructional leader, have a coherent vision, have a proven track record with an urban type of district similar to Jackson. Be approachable, understand logistics, be able to form partnerships with businesses and corporations, be a lifelong learner, and set high standards for students. Those were the themes. As Dr. Jacobson said, you will get a written report. Every comment that was made has been recorded. You will see that in a bulleted list preceding all of those comments will be an executive summary of everything that we did here. So, I thank you for your hospitality. It has been wonderful. Are there questions that I can answer?
I will defer my question until I get to see something in writing, but this is very, very helpful because I do have one or two questions that might be embedded there.
Sure.
And no point in going there now.
Sure.
But this preliminary report has been very, very helpful to understand, and so many things ring true, so many common things.
They did.
Other board members, you have comments or questions?
So, we've spent the last three days taking time from people in community, take time from people in our district. What's the guidance? So, we've heard comments, it's been summarized, and I open this up to folks from Fahrenheit Creative as well. How would you recommend we take this feedback as we move into the decision-making phase of this process so that we ensure that the voices are heard, that this is not taken for granted or overlooked?
Sure. As Dr. Jacobson said a little while ago, once you get our written report, and I'm not sure what you want to do with others, but you need to, you should post it on your website. We did tell every group that most likely that would happen so they can read those comments. I think you heard the same themes here this evening. And you will see a few more comments listed under each of those questions. They may be something that you want to formulate questions around for the new, while you're interviewing. I think what is important to your community and what's important to you, you might want to focus on those. I know Dr. Jacobson just handed distributed questions. You might want to look at those and make sure that the themes that we shared this evening, some of those questions cover. I think the proven track record I heard from all three of us this evening, that would be really important when you look at someone's background and ability to come into a district of your size with the diverse population and diverse needs of how you want to move forward. That's just, you know, two quick suggestions.
Mr. Thompson and Ms. McClendon, do y'all have any thoughts as well?
Yeah, come to the mic, or if you get a mic. Yeah, he'll give you a mic.
You can stay. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Safe travels back home, all of the team. Will you give just a minute for these folks to answer Dr. Sivak's question, Dr. Jacobson?
Respectfully, I know that we want to find a superintendent and put them in place quickly. However, the biggest piece with the community is that they want to know that they're heard. As educators, we want to know that our input is also part of this process. I don't know how feasible it would be, but as the candidates come and interview, I would like to see them be able to take part of a town hall with the community and the staff here within the district and the students, and be able to have that dialogue and ask questions. As you get ready to make your decision or your vote, I would like, this is just me, and I'm speaking kind of on behalf of educator here, but at the same token, on behalf of other teachers as well within the district. But then I would also like to see kind of like a small vote in-house within your community before you make your final decision, to see if the community had to vote or pick a superintendent, which one would they go with? And is their person of choice in line with the direction that you feel as a board would suit the district?
Right. Duly noted. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
So, I'll be really brief. I think there are three things. So, one thing that came out that we heard post the meeting is that people really appreciated the process to be engaged. And so, I think that'll be important, whatever the decision is made and whenever it's made, to be able to think about how can similar structure be put into place to make sure not only the board, but the superintendent continually gives voice to parents, educators, students. So, I think thinking about that will be critically important. I think the second thing is to keep, if it's posted on the website, if it's codified in some way, so keep, you know, where the district wants to go from where the community said, and what those key characteristics are in front of folks, right? Because the thing that was surprising, but also that we were appreciative of, that people realized that there's probably not somebody that's going to have all of these characteristics. They also said that the community, we have to be patient. And so, if you're able to, you know, clearly identify, these are the things we said we want, these are the ones we know that the superintendent has in spades, and this is where the team that he or she needs to build around and/or develop, right? But we have to keep that in front of folks, not in a shelf, you know, so they can see these are the things that we said. And I think the third thing is figuring out how the board can work in tandem with the superintendent to maintain this sense of and feeling of transparency. One thing that we heard very clearly was frustration from parents and, you know, that there was a distrust and a mistrust, right? And that won't be repaired just by naming a new superintendent, right? That's a process to rebuild that and gain that. And so, making sure that the open and honest communication stays there, but that, you know, both board members, which I know you are, but all the superintendent is present in community so that people can see all of those characteristics, feels, and qualities that they have said that they wanted.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Questions or comments for Mr. Thompson? Okay, Dr. Jacobson?
I'm going to address those two comments when we get to the interview schedule piece because that's where it's relevant.
Great.
The next part is interview questions, and I have a list of sample interview questions under each of your criteria that I'm going to hand out. And I'm going to ask you to circle two under each of the criteria, turn them in to Ms. Williams, and then we'll collect that. At the end, I have a thing called general, which is outside of your criteria. I want you to circle eight there. So, I'm going to pass those out. You can look at them now, but in lieu of the time that's taken, we'll have you do that. But I want to refer to the criteria because of what we just heard from the reports. This is a criteria the board came up with through a process we did in a work session. These are the six criteria, the most important criteria, and they're in prioritized order. Number one, an effective communicator with students, parents, teachers, principals, staff, board, and community. Number two, has a passion for and focus on high student achievement. Additionally, the individual will have genuine concern for all students and his strong knowledge of best practices in the areas of instruction, evaluation, foster, increase student achievement. Number three, has experience working in an urban district with a track record of success. Number four, possesses dynamic leadership ability and demonstrated skills in problem-solving, a strategic thinker with integrity. Number five, is politically savvy, open, honest, and accessible to all stakeholders, actively initiates community involvement. And number six, is knowledgeable in school finance and skilled in financial planning and management. I think a lot of what we heard from the report, you've got it. You've got it. And what it is, is the confirmation that you're in touch with your community, and the community knows that you're in touch with them as we do that. That report that we recommended to go on your website in addition for your constituents, it's really important for applicants to see that, and we direct them to that so they can see what... The first two is to try and convince them, this is a great spot. We want to move here. This is the spot we want to be. The next two are to take a look at what the challenges and opportunities are here as they take a look at their skill set, and then to compare against their skill set as to what the other things are looking for. So, if you'll circle two under each of the criteria, eight under the general, and give that to Ms. Williams. I want to talk about the interview schedule.
Excuse me, Dr. Jacobson?
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
And this is a question directed at the board. Is there anything we heard tonight that we should consider adding to this or incorporating? Or are folks comfortable with these themes so as to make sure that the community feedback we've gathered is integrated?
If I may, we usually address this at the third board meeting, but if you want to do it tonight, that's fine because that gives you an opportunity to read the reports, digest it.
So, there, that will, so that part of the process is...
Absolutely.
Okay. That's good to know. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Please, excuse me, thank you for that question and the clarification, Dr. Jacobson. You want two from each of the...
Under each of the criteria, there are five questions.
And eight under the general.
Pick two of those, circle them, and under the very last category, general, circle eight. We'll do a compilation, bring that to the third board meeting, and then readdress to make sure we've got all the issues addressed in the questions.
And you need these tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Jacobson, I know that you're not at the interview section now, but when we get to the interview section, do all of the candidates, or will all of the candidates get the same questions to respond to?
Yes. And it's important that they are all asked the same questions. That's a legal issue. You will receive a formatted interview format that you can use to write on, write your notes on, but we want them all to be asked the same questions.
Okay.
And when we meet you at the third board meeting, we'll be talking about the procedures for the interview. Why don't you ask all the same questions, but we'll be talking about if a candidate brings up a topic, you can ask follow-up questions, but they need to all be asked the same question.
Okay. Thank you. Barbara, that's a great question.
I want to just give you an overview of what we recommend for your stakeholder, excuse me, for your interview schedule. Typically, we recommend that you interview one candidate per day. They would arrive here at the district, be greeted by a board member, then get a quick tour of your community, maybe a walk-through of a school or two. After that, we recommend that you have stakeholder groups meet with the individuals. So, there would be however many stakeholder groups you decided have an opportunity to meet the candidates, ask them questions. They're going to have a form to fill out after they've done that, and basically it says, John Doe, Jane Doe, here's what we liked about them, here's any questions we had about them. They're going to put that in an envelope and seal it, turn it in, give it to a contact person. After you have interviewed all of your candidates and have had your discussion, you then open and read those. So, meaningful input from your stakeholders into your decision. By law, only you can make that decision, but when people know they've been meaningfully listened to, they support your decision. And so, when we get down to creating the interview schedule, we can talk about those groups. That is usually followed by an informal interview, which is usually a meal with the board and the candidate someplace so you have a chance to see them in a social setting, followed by the formal board interview itself. So, we'll be working to create a schedule like that for you to take a look at. Any questions about the interview day? And I think that addresses some of the concerns that you heard from here.
And if you may add one, we did ask in every group if they were interested in being part of that stakeholder community group for the interview candidates?
We did ask them to asterisk their name on the attendance sheet, so we do have a list of people who would be interested. Depending on what you choose to do and how many folks you want to be in that group, we can supply names for you of people interested.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The next item I was asked at our last work session to bring some information about salaries, passing out now a spreadsheet that has all the superintendent's salaries in the state, and it's salaries only, it doesn't talk about fringe benefits or length of contract, things like that. It's just, oh, starting place for you. So, when we begin to talk about compensation parameters, you will have that. And I know that I had six of these, but I think I only have five now, so we might have to share them someplace. This is the five highest-paid districts, so you can see that.
Do you want to see?
Oh, wait a minute. Maybe I do.
Dr. Jacobson, we might want to include some other state data on superintendent salaries.
Okay.
We'll need to think a minute. And if you would think, help think on your team.
I can find like-sized districts in the South.
Right, right.
To do that, in Alabama and... and Louisiana, Arkansas, Georgia.
Yeah, and other places too.
Okay.
Maybe a couple of similarly situated north, south, east, west.
As I told you when I first met with you, we really don't care what you pay your superintendent, because our fee's not based on that at all. But we want you to attract quality individuals, and we don't want you to lose them over a couple thousand dollars. So we need to talk, you know, we don't want you to spend one dime more than you have to. But you have to be attractive, you have to be attractive on a national level.
And this is 2017 data, salary data you shared?
That's the 2017, is that what it says there? Yeah, that's the most recent.
Great, okay, I got you.
Seventeen eighteen.
Thank you, this is very helpful.
The final interview, the final agenda question is if you have any questions or need additional information from us.
Perhaps you've already shared with us, but do you have in print the interview schedule? I know you've given us the dates, but what you just shared was...
I will be...
One per day, two are the community stakeholder groups, complete survey, informal and informal.
Right. What I'll do is be preparing for you an interview schedule, and we can talk about the groups that you want to form. So I'll have a template, and then the board can say, here are the groups we want to do that, and we can plug them in that way.
Thank you.
When do you expect we'll have the report?
Well, the survey ends on Sunday.
Next week, that's all I needed to hear. End of next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you share the timetable for the remainder of the search?
If I had my calendar with me, I could. Does somebody have a calendar? That's why you bring a team, so they have stuff. We're closing it on, I can tell you this, we're closing the search on May 14th. From May 14th to... Thank you, ma'am. Until we meet with you on the 30th, I think it's the 30th or the 31st. We will be in our vetting process, so you won't be hearing a lot from us. What we do in the vetting process is that we take all the completed applications, we read through every one of them, we begin comparing them against what you said and your community has said they're looking for for characteristics, we begin a sorting process. Those that we think are most closely meeting what you said. Now, when we come and meet with you, we bring in names of everybody applied. We don't take anybody's name off the list. But we will have what we call our shortlist. Here are the seven, eight, nine, 10 that we think are most closely meeting what you're looking for. We're going to do a deep dive in the vetting process. And in our vetting process, in the 40-plus years I've been in HR, I've yet to find someone who puts a reference down and doesn't like them, we know that. We start with those individuals, we ask them our list of questions, and we have two questions at the, or a question at the end. Would you give us a name or two or three other individuals that could speak this person's ability? They do, we call them, and ask the same set of questions, and would you give us a name or two or three individuals that speak the person's abilities? We're looking for consistency of answers. And going three-deep in that vetting process really helps us to do that. So that when we come in and meet with you, we're going to give you a written overview, an oral overview, and a videotape of those shortlist individuals, so that you have an opportunity to get a feel for them. From that, you're going to decide who and how many you wish to interview to do that. Probably more of an answer than you wanted.
That's helpful.
Thank you, very helpful. Other questions or comments from the board? Well, this has been very helpful, Dr. Jacobson, your team. We look forward to continuing this work together.
Thank you very much, and thanks for inviting me down here with snowing in Omaha today.
Well, have safe travels, hope you make it back safely, thank you. We will continue with the agenda. Continuing under item seven B, non-renewal of teachers and administrators with expiring teaching certification. Ms. Lyons?
Good afternoon, yeah, good evening to Dr. Harrison, members of the board, Dr. Murray. The administration presents for information only the non-renewals of teachers and administrators with expiring teaching or administrative certification, and for information only, title and location change for school administrators for school year 16, excuse me, school year 18, 19.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by board members?
So this list is, I'm sorry, just... Only for non-renewals and administrators with expiring teaching licenses. Are there any particular steps that we can take to assist the teachers with these expirings?
Well, normally this time of year, we do have teachers and administrators whose licenses are expiring, but since we submitted this information into Novus, we've had about 20, close to 20 licenses that have been renewed.
Okay.
So they're coming in, but, you know, sometimes we wait to the last minute to...
So do you know when we'll know, when we know what the vacancies will be for next year?
Um, right now, there's a guesstimated number, but I would say maybe close to, maybe mid-May, we may have a true, maybe close to a true number of what the vacancies would be going into the new school year, yeah. And that gives the teachers enough time to get their license renewed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Lyons, we appreciate it. Item seven C. Information-only item, title or location change for school administrators for school year 2018, 19. Ms. Lyons? You completed, you presented both of those at the same time?
I did, I'm sorry, did I, I did do that, didn't I? But for information only, the administration presents a title and location change for the school administrators listed for the 18, 19 school year.
Thank you, we did receive that information early. Any questions or comments from board? Hearing on, thank you so much, Ms. Lyons. Item eight, information action items, and we'll need a vote on these. We have two, and we'll consider them separately. Item A, approval of government consultants to serve as municipal advisor for potential 2018 general application bond issue, and Seabird Cisneros Shank and Company LLC to serve as underwriters. Dr. Murray?
Ms. Miller, Ms. Miller is on the line, so I'll allow Ms. Miller to, I want to attempt to explain this process. So Ms. Miller will speak to this recommendation.
Thank you for joining us, Ms. Miller.
Hello?
Hi, thank you for joining us.
I'm good, how are you, Dr. Harrison?
Good, we are here and happy to hear from you.
Ms. Miller, can you speak to this recommendation, the proposal to approve the government consultants and Cisneros?
Seabird Cisneros Shank and Company to serve as our underwriters.
Government consultants as the financial advisor to the district in working with the potential bond issue, a geo-bond issue for 2018 that will provide the district for some additional funds to do some infrastructure repairs to buildings, and also some renovations. Also, Seabird Cisneros Shank and Company, the administration is also recommending that they be engaged as the underwriters for this bond issue if it should move forward. This bond issue would require a referendum, which means a vote of the constituents of the city of Jackson. We are in a very unique position in that the district had some debt that we actually paid off on April the first. And so that was about five meals that we were, that were obligated to the district. At this point, those meals have rolled off. And so we are in a very unique position to potentially issue additional debt, which could range around $70 million in additional funding to the district that would allow us to do some capital improvements to the district at no tax increase, at no cost to the citizens of Jackson. The engagement of government consultants as the financial advisor would guide this process. They would basically oversee the entire process, supervise basically, as it were, the financial team, which would consist of staff from the district, Seabird, Cisneros, Shank and Company, if approved, as underwriters. And also, we will bring forward to you at a very soon date a recommendation for bond counsel and/or underwriter counsel. We anticipate that the total cost of issuance would be less than 2%, which is the maximum that's allowed. However, we will be bringing back, once all the team members are in place, the exact fees that will be charged. So we are recommending that government consultants and Seabird Cisneros Shank and Company be engaged immediately so that we can begin this work. We are on a timeline that the debt, if it is passed, if the citizens support this bond issue, that it must be done and completed by August 15th in order to get it on the Avalon request for the 18, 19 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And the board finance committee did meet with Ms. Miller and her staff, and we did review this information as well under her guidance. Are there questions by board members or comments?
I have a question. You said that this bond money would be used for capital improvements. Will it be limited to that?
Yes, general obligation bonds are generally limited to capital improvements, which would include building renovations, new construction, things of that nature. It's not allowed to be used for, you know, personnel or anything of that nature. It has to be tied to capital projects that we are, as a matter of fact, the administration is working along with the finance team, and also will be bringing some recommendations to the board for those projects that we would recommend that these funds be allocated to.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller, can you describe the due diligence you did to arrive at the recommendations of government consulting as the financial advisor and Seabird Cisneros and Shanks as the underwriter?
Yes, sir. There are a number of financial advisors that are in the area. However, we had looked at another firm, and then we're also looking at government consultants. We looked at, they have an extensive experience with K-12 bond issues, specifically the recent Rankin County bond issue that was passed. Also, they're working with the Hines County School District bond issue that passed, and also are in negotiations with Vicksburg. They have done extensive work in Louisiana, and I spoke with several members of different school districts in Louisiana. This is a very well-known firm. They have been in the Jackson area for a number of years. And so we determined that they would be the best fit for the district. It's crucial for us at this point to have an experienced, a very experienced financial advisor, and one that is local, that will make sure that, quite honestly, they're at the disposal of the district. When it comes to Seabird Cisneros Shank and Company, they are the largest minority-owned, and also women-owned firm. They are one of the largest in the nation. We had personal experience with them at the district. They served as co-underwriters on the 2015 bond issue. They've done extensive work with the city of Jackson and also the Jackson Redevelopment Authority. Most recently, they were the underwriters for the bonds that were issued to build the Western Hotel. Their reputation is stellar, and in working with them personally, they, I know that they have the best interests of the district at heart. They're very above board and very dedicated to helping the district and making sure that we meet our goals. We did, again, talk with other folks who have worked with them and very pleased with the work that they have all done.
Ms. Miller, could you provide some examples of the things they did during the 2015 issue that prompted you, or is evidence of why we should go with them?
Well, the underwriters are critical to the part of the financing process of the transaction when we actually go to market, basically selling the bonds. They help structure the way that the bonds will be issued. We also, it's crucial for us to have a firm that has a wide reach nationwide so that the district can get the best pricing for their bonds. They worked very, very closely with us on negotiating the bond prices. The day of the activity, they kept us, we were actually on the phone live with them while those bonds were sold. They provided us with analysis of the bond transaction all the way through the process. And they actually managed all of that bond preparation, the selling of the bonds, the pre-sale, they assisted us when we had to do a rating agency presentation. And so they are very crucial when it comes to the part of actually pricing and selling the bonds, or basically what we call going to the market.
That's helpful. On the government consulting proposal, could you provide a little bit of background on the actual individual who will be serving as our lead contact?
Yes, Mr. Mamby Thompson is, has an extensive background in this type of work. He has recently moved to Jackson, or relocated to Jackson from Louisiana, and specifically with a K-12 background. He has, was a former teacher, as a matter of fact, and so he has a background in K-12. He also has been doing a number of financial transactions for a number of years. And he's got about 18 years as a municipal advisor, 18 years of experience. He's worked with previous large organizations, nationwide organization, Cruze and Associates, in public finance, he has an investment background, and has a very stellar reputation. I've personally checked references on not only the company government consultants, but also Mr. Thompson and the other districts, and also the other local municipalities that have worked with him have been extremely pleased. He's very hands-on, and it's very anxious to work with us and help us get this opportunity passed as quickly as we can.
In checking references, who did you contact? And what was some of their specific feedback, both about government consultants and Mr. Thompson?
Government consultants, and specifically Mr. Thompson, Hines County School District. He has worked extensively with them on this bond issue. Also, Vicksburg Warren, the, I can't remember the school district, Union Parish School District in Louisiana. He has led the majority of the bond transactions, the municipal transactions for K-12 from the northern side of Louisiana for a number of years. He, government consultants, I specifically spoke with the Rankin County School District, and also the Oxford School District, of which they have worked very closely with them specifically. So that company is not just Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson will be the lead person if approved for Jackson Public Schools. But they have a staff in that firm of consultants that have over 25, 30 years of experience working with municipalities, specifically in the state of Mississippi and K-12.
In addition to your references, and I appreciate that, Ms. Miller, I also contacted the board president of the Rankin County School District to find out from a board perspective their experience with government consulting, and it was very favorable, timely, accurate, responsive. And in addition, the CFO of Union Parish also said that if they had another issue, they would, they worked specifically with Mr. Thompson. would, they worked specifically with Mr. Thompson. They would hire him again in an instant, and again, it was because he was responsive, accurate. And so, I appreciate you doing the due diligence on the transaction. I know a major question associated with facility improvements will be which facilities will be improved? Do we have a timetable for working up a potential list of facilities, projects, basically how the money, a proposal for how the money would be spent?
Yes, we have a target draft date of the 23rd, which is Monday, to provide the board with kind of a start of how we propose spending those dollars.
Okay.
Excellent. Other questions or comments for Ms. Miller? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the government consultants to serve as municipal advisor for a potential 2018 general obligation bond issue and Sebert, Cisneros, Shank and Company LLC to serve as underwriters?
Some moved.
I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we have approved government consultants and underwriters.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8B, a recommendation to allow extended hours worked by certified staff to satisfy the days needed to fulfill contracted days. Dr. Murray?
Evening, Dr. Harrison, board members. As you all are fully aware, we had some inclement weather that necessitated the district to be closed for multiple days, and so our staff, our certified teachers and classified teachers were adversely affected by that. We reached out for some opinions. Our classified staff, unfortunately, those opinions were not favorable, but for the certified staff, they gave us the discretion, and you all helped me kind of navigate through this, the discretion to make a decision if the board felt that the extension of days would transfer into that day, then the board could approve that, those hours. We are recommending that the board approve the extended day, which far exceeded one day, those hours, and everyone is happy that we completed that last Friday, but we feel as though those extended days equaled more than a day, and we're asking the board at this time to accept those extended hours as the day that the staff would have to make up. Certified staff.
You've heard the recommendation. Board, do we have any questions or comments? Did anyone? It flew out of my mind.
Do you want to come back to it?
No, it's okay.
Question, Dr. Murray?
Yes, ma'am.
Classified staff, you say they are not included in this, right?
No, ma'am. The opinion, Attorney Shepherd, if you could speak to that opinion for us.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. No, Ms. Hill, the classified staff were not included in the recommendation because the Attorney General's Office did not opine on that particular question because by the time they answered, we had already paid the classified staff. And they don't comment on past action of a public body.
Okay. Thank you. That question, Ms. Hill, reminded me of the question that had flown out of my mind. If I remember correctly, wasn't there, Attorney Shepherd, some issue in our board policy that there might be a way we could be proactive to revise our board policy so we won't be in this situation again? Could you help us with that and will our policy committee, we'll have to be mindful of that?
Yes, you're exactly right, Dr. Harrison. There was a way that we could revise the policy so that we would not have this particular situation, and that would allow us to essentially, for lack of a better word, forgive the days. That policy has been drafted by Dorian and I, and so it's available for review.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much. Are there other questions or comments regarding the recommendation to allow extended hours worked by certified staff to satisfy the days needed to fulfill contracted days? Hearing no questions, is there a motion to approve?
I move that we accept the recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the recommendation is approved.
Thank you.
Item nine, consent agenda items, finance will require a vote. Item A, Ms. Miller, approval of disbursements and accounts payable for activity fund claims for period March 24th through April 6th, 2018.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you can see, I'm not Ms. Miller. I'm Ms. Purnell, and I'm standing in for Ms. Miller this afternoon on the consent items for finance. To Dr. Harrison, the Board of Trustees, Dr. Amori, the administration asks for the approval of disbursements and accounts payable and activity fund claims for the period of March 24th, 2018 through April 6th of 2018.
This information was distributed earlier. Board, do we have questions or comments for Ms. Purnella? Is that correct? What was your name? Excuse me?
Ms. Margaret Purnell.
Purnell?
Yes.
Do we have questions or comments for Ms. Purnell? Hearing none, do I hear a motion for approval?
Some moved.
Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda item under finance, A has been approved. Ms. Purnell?
B. The administration also asks for approval to award the RFP number 2017-16 for the library automation and circulation management system.
Thank you. This information was presented earlier. Board, are there questions or comments?
Yes. Could you summarize how, a couple of things. One, the goal of this award, and I have a large question, is this associated with the corrective action plan compliance as well?
Library automation, Dr. Mary.
Yes, and yes.
Go into detail, or.
Yes. Erin, she's a standard leader, but yes, it is associated with it. This is just the card catalog online now, and so we are required to move in that direction according to the standard.
Is that correct, Erin?
Yes.
And what's the timetable for full implementation?
As soon as we possibly need it.
And I can't remember our exact timeframe that we wrote into the cap, but it is written into the cap of the timeframe for implementation upon approval.
So, would it be ready when students start in the fall? Would it be ready second semester?
It is our hope for it to be ready in August, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you, Ms. Mason, for your input. Thank you, Dr. Murray, Ms. Purnell. Do we have a motion to approve the RFP for the library management system?
Some moved.
Hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item has been approved. Thank you, Ms. Purnell. Item C, recommendation to dispose of surplus property.
The board is also, the finance and the administration asks for approval to, for the recommendation to dispose of surplus property.
Thank you. This information also was distributed earlier. Board members, do we have questions or comments for Ms. Purnell? Hearing none, do I hear a recommendation to approve item C, dispose of this surplus property?
Some moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda item C has been approved. And Ms. Purnell, item D, approval of formal bids?
The administration does ask for the board approval of the formal bids.
Could you just describe what the formal bids are?
Sandra? Ms. Robinson? Because I don't have one with me. I have Ms. Robinson here to help me with that.
Thank you.
Ms. Robinson?
Good evening, board members. Dr. Murray?
Good evening.
On this agenda, we have approval for four bids. Bid 3065 is the roof replacement for Casey Elementary School. Bid 3066 is the roof replacement of Isabel Elementary School. Bid 3067 is the roof replacement for Baker Elementary School, and bid 3068 is the roof replacement for Wilkins Elementary School. All of these schools received extensive hail damage during the 2013 hailstorm. We're still replacing roofs based on the hailstorm.
So, the four roof replacements at four schools?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding that all of the, the entire cost of each of those four roofs will be covered by the hailstorm fund? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve item D, to accept the formal bids on four roof replacement at four of our schools?
Some moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the formal bids for roof replacement on four of our schools. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, item D has been approved. Thank you both so much for your help. Consent agenda item 10, general, we need a vote on these three items. Item A, Ms. Talitha Bingham, recommendation to approve agreement between the Jackson Public Schools and the Irwin Law Firm.
Good evening.
The Office of Exceptional Education Services is requesting the board's approval to enter into a service agreement with the Irwin Law Firm to provide services in connection with the application for label certification on behalf of Eileen Sanchez. She is currently a teacher at Raines Elementary, and she teaches or provides services for students with disabilities. She is a certified teacher.
Okay.
She has some awards. She was awarded the Teacher of the Year last year at Raines. Also, she was awarded Educator of the Year with the Parent for Public Schools in Jackson. So, she's one of our well-known, hard-working teachers.
Is she here?
She is here. Mrs. Sanchez is.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Do I hear any questions or comments from the board?
Just a question about what led to the selection of the Irwin Law Firm in particular. Is there?
It was, this firm has been working in conjunction with Ms. Sanchez since she arrived from the Philippines.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve this agreement?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the recommendation is approved. Thank you, Ms. Bingham. Item B, approval of contract between the Mississippi Children's Museum, and we thank you for your work. Approval of the contract between Mississippi Children's Museum and the Jackson Public School District.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Harrison, the administration is recommending that the Board of Trustees approve the contract between Mississippi Children's Museum and the Jackson Public School District. This agreement will allow the Mississippi Children's Museum to develop and implement a one-week read-to-secede camp that will serve 50 bubble scholars who have not passed the third-grade MAPS summative reading assessment. I believe this is the fourth year that the museum has conducted this camp. It is an intense week of reading instruction, and typically on the first day, the opening day on that Monday, Governor and Mrs. Bryant opens that morning session to motivate and encourage the students as they embark upon a fun-filled week of learning.
Great. Do we have any questions?
Dr. Murray, so this program is targeted towards children who are on the bubble, to use your terminology. And is it around the third grade?
Third grade.
Reading test?
Yes, sir.
And what's our success, how successful, what's the success rate of the program over the last three years?
It's been pretty successful, and I do want to note that these are students enrolled in our four-week summer program, and so we select 50 out of that sample that we really feel that are close to participate in it, and it has had a, I can't remember the exact numbers, but we've had a good percentage passing rate of those students who are on the bubble. So, it's been very effective in supporting that group of students.
So, good percentage, over half, 75%?
Of those that participate, yes, sir. At least over 50% of those that participate.
Could you share a little bit more about the four-week summer program that this is, students are?
Yes, ma'am. So, as required by state statute, if I'm not mistaken, those students who do not pass the third-grade reading test, the district is required to offer some type of enrichment or tutoring booths for them during the summer months, and so we do that during the month of June. We have pretty good participation in it. We select the best teachers to support our students in that, and we do have a good curriculum in place that addresses the skills that are needed in order to be successful on that assessment, and so that's something that we've been doing since this test. This assessment has been implemented to support our students who need that additional support to get over that hump. You know, after they receive, after they take the test in May or whenever it's scheduled within the school, and most of them have already taken it now, we give another retest before school ends, and then there are two opportunities during the summer months for them to do, to retake the assessment. However, if they do not participate in our program, they must have, must have evidence that they participated in another enrichment program over the summer in order to qualify to take the retest. So, that's something that we have been offering since the implementation of that assessment.
And about how many children participate in the four-week program?
We have had in the past anywhere from 120 to 150. It's something, we don't provide participation. Parents must bring their children, and so the ones that come are committed, and although all of them may not be successful on the, on the assessment, we do see some gains that are made over the summer months, and in the past, Kellogg has supported the initiative and through the National Board of Certified Teachers, they have added additional tutors to help support our scholars in that effort, so they really do receive good instruction during those summer months.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I lost my place. Okay.
Madam President, I move that we approve the contract.
Right, I got so deep into the reading program. Good colleague, teamwork. It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the recommendation has been approved. Item C, approval of a memorandum of agreement between JPS and the science teaching excites medical interest. STEM, STEMI. Dr. Murray?
Good afternoon, Madam President, board members. As you all know, we've heard from several groups tonight, the work that we do at UMMC with Base Pair, SOAR, Health Academies, so we have several MOUs currently with UMMC. This is an opportunity to continue that work in another capacity. They've received a million-plus-dollar grant, and this MOU is to partner with them for teacher training in the area of STEM, and so we're asking for the board's approval of this MOU of no cost to the district to provide support for our teachers. Excuse me.
Thank you. Do we have questions or comments from the board? Another indication of our strong partnerships in Jackson and JPS. Do I hear a motion to approve this memorandum of agreement?
Some moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda. Hearing none, consent agenda item C is approved.
Dr. Harrison, can we ask Ms. Williams maybe to make a note? And maybe we could get a report from some of the teachers or a teacher that participates? I assume it's going to be this summer?
Uh, yes.
And just to hear how, how the experience went when we get back.
And if I could, I could add, just recently, we had the privilege, the leadership team, we did a field trip to UMMC this week. They took us on a tour of the Base Pair program. We got to see our actual students from Murrah at work in the labs. Took us to the simulators in their new School of Medicine. And it's just tremendous work that's going on with training of our teachers and our students. So we definitely can provide that, that update for you.
Thank you, so noted. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you, Dr. Savak. Item 11, consent agenda items under personnel. A, Ms. Lyons, approval of staff personnel matters.
Good evening, Dr. Murray, Dr. Harrison, members of the board. The administration asks for the approval of staff personnel matters. It's listed in board material. And if I can also add, as you approved staff personnel matters, A 52, she's listed, that staff member is listed as being resigned, is resigning at the end of the school year. She's also listed in Section D of the agenda, and we would like to remove her from Section D and accept her resignation in Section A.
Thank you for that clarification. Do I hear questions or comments from the board? If I recall from reading through this material earlier, which was distributed, did we have a higher number of teachers resigning?
This time of year is, is the norm. And what we did, so that we can have, we can start receiving a clear number of vacancies for the next school year, we sent out statements of intent so that we can get, you know, a number of how many teachers were returning. And these teachers, you know, decided they would leave. And so that's why they are listed here.
So this number is not particularly higher than this time last year?
No, this is, is the norm.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Do I hear a motion or further questions or comments from the board? Do I hear a motion to approve the staff personnel matters? Item 11A.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, item A has been approved. Item B, Ms. Lyons, approval of teachers, counselors, librarians, and psychometric staff salaries and contracts.
The administration asks for the approval of teachers, counselors, librarians, and psychometric staff salaries and contracts for the 2018-19 school year.
You distributed this information earlier. Board members, do I hear questions or comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that we approve consent agenda item B, the approval of the staff members' contracts for the 2018-19 school year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item B has been approved. Ms. Lyons, item C, approval of classified staff and salaries for the upcoming school year.
Yes, ma'am. The administration also asks for the approval of classified staff members and salaries for the 2018-19 school year.
Thank you for distributing this information earlier. Board members, do we have questions or comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve item C?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we have approved the classified staff members and salary scale as presented for the school year, 2018-19. Item D, and remind us of the item, these individuals, name, number of the individuals who we were removing, for the approval of administrative staff members and salaries for the upcoming school year.
The administration asks for the approval of the administrative staff members and salaries for the 18-19 school year. With the exception of A 52 listed in consent agenda items personnel, staff personnel matters.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Thank you for distributing the information earlier. Do I hear a motion to approve item 11D?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve item 11D. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this item has passed. Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
Thank you.
Do we have any other business, board members? Do we have a consideration to hold executive session?
Oh, we have one item.
One item for executive session. Do I hear a motion to consider to hold an executive session?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we?
Be very quick.
Have a very quick, no, we are here for the work. Take your time. To hold an executive session, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we will ask our public, thank you so much for coming, your input and support, as we close the public meeting, to consider to hold an executive session.